I'm going to call to order the December 12th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and the staff in the pledge, which tonight, well, I put the hat, I can't do otherwise with the full name by Mrs. Billy Hammond.
The citizens to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening. Do you confer with our legal counsel regarding one item of potential approval to initiate or intervene in an action? No action was taken. So now we'll proceed to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, the council is prohibited by state law from taking action or having a discussion about items raised under Item 1A, but it does provide an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening, please fill out one of the yellow cards, it's available at the front door, and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. We take the cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on an agenda item. Once the public comment and the council questions and discussion have begun, we don't take any additional cards, so if you are here to speak on an agenda item later this evening, we encourage you to turn in the card as soon as possible, but for sure by the conclusion of the staff presentation on that item. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can present some anxiety, so we add to us that there not be any boos, or palas, or cat calls, or other demonstrations, and that we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chamber. So with that, we have one request to speak under Item 1A. It's by Katie Hauser.
I'm only going to take a few moments of your time here, but I'm just here to chat real quick about the fitness challenge that we have coming up here at the Recreation Center in January. And so this program, it's a six-week program at the Recreation Center that people register for with a variety of different fitness goals, being weight loss, or, you know, losing body fat, just learning how to eat healthier, building muscle mass, a variety of different things. And so people register, again, it's a six-week program, and the cost is $124, and when people register, they're put in teams with personal trainers who kind of lead them through this six-week journey. And so, you know, we teach you how to log your food, which if you've ever done is logging everything that you eat and drink is very taxing for six weeks, but you learn a tremendous amount. So they put you on teams, and we meet weekly, every Monday where you can weigh in, and we go through different education sessions on eating, exercising, a variety of different issues. And the main goal is to teach people about just sustaining a healthier lifestyle. It's not just about losing weight in that six-week period, or really working out in that six-week period, but really just moving forward from the program, knowing how to sustain a healthy lifestyle, and stay away from fad diets and hardcore, you know, the super, super heavy working out if that's not what you're used to, and just really figuring out how to sustain that. So we have another session coming up. Again, it starts January 14th, and there's a not sure meeting on January 10th, so people can come, and we can kind of go through how the program works, and we can just answer any questions they may have at that time. So we have that going on here shortly, and we have about 60 to 75 percent of people who participate in the program breach all of their fitness goals in that timeframe. So, and Oscar has participated in the past, and I think, hopefully, he enjoyed that. So, and all this information can be found on the website as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Villegas.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Katie, for presenting that. It really is a wonderful opportunity to really promote general health for those who've never had the opportunity to work out in a group setting where you're really learning about nutrition, you're learning about your caloric intake, you're tracking it. It really provides you with a new way to kind of look at how to manage your health. And I know, and, you know, with the New Year's resolutions surfacing at the beginning of the year, it's a great opportunity to jump in, and if you've never done it, certainly taking a look at it and seeing what the rec center offers is a great, great opportunity that's right in our own community that has never existed before. I think it's the third program. The last two were very well attended, and staff really does a wonderful job of supporting you in a very positive way. And if you've not seen what people can do, there are some incredible stories of people who have really come, you know, 180 from where they were before they started the program. And I think it's a six-week, if I remember correctly, six-week program. It's not very intensive. You only show up once a week. You're doing your stuff, you're doing, the exercise is obviously on your own, but there's a one-day-a-week check-in to sort of circle back and talk about what has happened. So, great opportunity. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
All right, that's our only request under Item 1A, so we're going to proceed to Item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports to other communications this evening?
The Secoag Board did meet, and one item, at least was of interest, and I mentioned
that this was coming, but it did actually occur, that we, the city of West Sacramento was honored with the Blueprint Award, which is one of the region's highest awards for projects that advance the blueprint principles around environmental and economic sustainability and smart growth. And we were honored for the Bridge District Infrastructure Project Planning and Implementation. Both Charlene Tamilton and Katie Jacobson joined me for the award presentation. We've won not this award, but several Secoag regional awards, I think more than almost any other jurisdiction, maybe the city of Sacramento with its 10 times as many candidate projects. But it was a good honor and recognition for the power of the project that we've undertaken in the Bridge District to really leverage the kind of change in how development happens in the region and in the community, and really concentrate more urban development in order to protect agricultural and habitat lands on the fringes of the city and in the county, and to create the kind of, you know, really great places that we all want to see in the region. So it was a great honor, and glad to be able to accept that. I think it's, Charlene took it, but I think the actual award might be in the council office or somewhere in the community development, so we'll bring it by. And then the board also approved all the MOU changes with respect to the streetcar that was reported at the last meeting. So some major changes, not in the MOU, but major advances in the, in project development for the streetcar project. And then we also adopted a series of policies around bicycle, pedestrian, and trails to undergo the next master plan for the region, and joining the National Safe Routes to School Partnership, which is part of our MTP as well. So the Secoag Board also is elected. Steve Kohn is the next vice chair, Mary Jane Griege of Viva County is the new chair of the board. Both of them are fans of West Sacramento and what we're doing here, so that should be positive as well.
I apologize. Yeah, sorry about that. I forgot. The Yolo County Transportation District met on Monday, and just two items. We ratified, as you mentioned earlier, the MOU for the planning and downtown riverfront transit project, and then also we had a brief presentation on the downtown Sacramento Transit Circulation Study that I think has been brought to the attention of folks at Secoag, and so our executive director is keeping an eye on that because obviously the downtown Sacramento circulation with both regional transit and Yolo bus could have some impacts on our bus routes there as well. That's it.
Okay. Then this is the meeting traditionally where we make the assignments to the various boards, commissions, and two-by-twos of members of the city council. So I'd like to make those appointments tonight with the council's concurrence. Very few, very few changes, but for the city-county two-by-two, Mr. Johannes and Mr. Villegas. For the city school, two-by-two, Mr. Villegas and Mayor Protem Ladesma. For the executive commission for the homeless tenure plan, Mr. Johannes. For the regional water, and I'm skipping those, folks are following along on the agenda page, but several of these are boards that we don't make the direct appointment to, I'm skipping those. The Regional Water Authority, Mr. Kristoff with Mr. Ladesma as the alternate. The River City Stadium Financing Authority, Mr. Kristoff and myself. The Sacramento Area Council of Governments, myself with Mr. Ladesma as the alternate. The Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District Board, Mr. Villegas with Mr. Kristoff as the alternate. The Streetcar Policy Steering Committee, myself and Mayor Protem Ladesma with Mr. Johannes as the alternate. Universal Preschool for West Sacramento Executive Board, Mr. Villegas. Water Resources Association Board, Mayor Protem Ladesma with Mr. Kristoff as the alternate. The Waterfront Coordinating Committee, I believe no longer exists. The West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency Joint Powers Authority, Mr. Kristoff with Mayor Protem Ladesma as the alternate. The West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation Liaison, Mr. Johannes. The Yolo County Housing Authority nominee, Mr. Johannes. The Yolo County Transportation District, Mr. Villegas, with Mr., well, Mr. Villegas, Mr. with Mayor Protem Ladesma as the alternate. The Natural Heritage Program, JPA Board, Mayor Protem Ladesma with Mr. Johannes as the alternate. The Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District, Mr. Johannes with Mayor Protem Ladesma as the alternate. And the Youth Commission Liaison, Mr. Villegas. All right, so those would be the appointments. Is there a motion to approve, to confirm the appointments? Okay, by Mr. Villegas and seconded by Mr. Johannes. Sign no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, any none, that motion carries. I don't want to see his appointments to boards and commissions. We have that scheduled for January, and I know every member of the council has received a binder of the many, many applications that we have thankfully received from citizens in the community who have volunteered to serve on the various boards and commissions that help to guide the city's policies and practices and priorities. And so we, members of the council are invited to use whatever process they wish to, from make their own nominations, but we would ask that you submit the nominations to me by the end of the month, or at the very latest on January 2nd. And then our, my intention is to bring the full proposed set of nominations for the commissions to the council at our second meeting in January. All right. That brings us then to, we conducted the employee service awards ceremony prior to this meeting, so that brings us to the consent agenda, items three through six. I have a series of questions on item three. Are there other questions or comments, or any items to remove off consent? All right, item three, it's consideration of approval of subordination request and modification to the promissory note and deed of trust to facilitate refinance of the Courtyard Village housing developments. Mr. Huerta, so one of the key provisions of this whole arrangement of refinancing for this housing project is that the city and the former redevelopment agency would be changing the terms of our loan for the project by extending the term from 20 years to 25 years, removing the, essentially the minimum, the $75,000 a year minimum payment, and potentially unloading the, essentially unloading the loan payment structure?
That is correct, yes.
So, I mean, I understand how we got to the point with respect to the untimely death of Wachovia and the need for the project owner to, Mr. Ladesma's not crying, for the project owner to secure sort of quick financing from Umpqua at less than, less than ideal interest rate in terms. And I think I get that the HUD loan requires us to restructure ours to match the timeframe. Is that?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So I get that part, and that, so we have to restructure to 35 years, which you know, Mr. Wright can tell you, I hate the extensions of these terms, and this is a big one. But in addition to that, that the removal of the minimum pay, of the effective minimum payment requirement, that's not exactly how it's structured. It seems like there's, we're giving a lot in this arrangement in order to essentially, you know, make the loan terms for the project owner substantially more favorable. Can you provide a little bit of background about why we would, where we have discretion to do so, why we're doing that?
Correct. The changes that we are proposing are primarily because they are required by the HUD program that they're intending to use to refinance the project. There are significant changes. Staff felt that while these changes do end loan the payments to the RDA, the former RDA loan as originally planned, there is a benefit to the project because we're making it a lot more financially feasible with the new loan that they would be obtaining from the HUD insured loan. This is a project that we've had significant problems historically, and the agency has had to deal with a lot of issues with this project. We now have a developer who has managed this property extremely well. We want that property to continue to be well managed and be financially feasible so that it doesn't fall into disrepair in the foreseeable future. So while we are giving up some items to accommodate the refinance, we strongly feel that it is offset by the stability that the project would gain, and making sure that the project remains an affordable project and, you know, feasible for the long term.
So what is precisely necessary for HUD, and what are we doing as part of this arrangement that is discretionary?
We, everything that we're doing is because of the HUD program requirements, so we're not doing anything above and beyond what HUD doesn't require. The elimination of the hard payment component is a requirement under the HUD program. Matching the term of the first mortgage loan is also a requirement of the HUD program. And making sure that while the project is, has mortgage that is insured by HUD, that up to 75 percent of residual receipts are used for any delinquent payments of the loan. So nothing that we propose goes above and beyond what the HUD program requires.
So do we anticipate any repayment stream over, in the near-to-midterm then, if there's no require, if all of these changes get made?
The developer has to account for the loss of that fixed payment, is prepared to offer a letter of credit so that the minimum payment that we are doing away with will essentially be paid if the project cannot make it. So it's a letter of credit personally from the developer, who is willing to do that so that we are going to be assured that minimum $75,000 payment that begins in 2014. But you write, the payments initially are going to be reduced from what they were originally anticipated, but the payments will be made up towards the end of the loan. Again, we are anticipating that minimum payment of $75,000 for the next seven years at a minimum. And again, this will be done through the letter of credit that the developer is ready, is prepared to provide.
Okay. Just for the general staff reports, I've given my personal preference. I really don't like the analyses that try to report everything in today's dollars, right? Because it makes a big difference. A million dollars 100 years from now is worth a lot less to the city than a million dollars right now, right? And so when we're only given today's dollars and said, well, the return is the same, it is the same, but it's only the same because at a time that even probably, even probably Mr. Kristoff won't be around, that we'll be receiving almost all the money then, instead of a stream of income that we could make investments right now or over the next several years in other community improvements and housing projects. So I think it's very misleading when we describe things in today's dollars that have 35-year repayment schedules in terms of trying to assess what the actual impact is. But I just, I want to be really sure, because I, you know, this is a gigantic advantage to the developer. We, in addition to this arrangement, we have invested a huge amount, you know this, Raul, because you've been part of it, but we've invested a huge amount of dollars in this project, not just this specific improvements lately, but from the beginning. For those who are, you know, who are in the audience or on TV that don't know the Courtyard Village name, that Harbor Park, Sandalwood Apartments, what was the one before, what was the name before that? We've been through a bunch of these, but it's been a severe problem. We've invested a huge amount of time and staff resources in the project, and so we've definitely, the public has put its, the local public has definitely put skin in the game. And so I want to be careful that we're not viewing this as we need to make, when we say we want to make this project, you know, the development project as successful as possible, that we're not just, that's not just code for we want to make sure that the developer is doing financially as well as possible, because we've, our partnership in this, we've definitely come up with our part. And as a result of this change, we're moving from a developer, the developer's own loan of $8.4 million in it, plus the Umpqua loan of $9.5 million, to really no direct developer loan. It's all, will all be accounted for this HUD, by this HUD thing, nearly, you know, almost half as much in terms of the interest rate, plus no guaranteed payment to us, plus longer terms from us, plus, it's a lot of transfers. So we need to be, I just want to be absolutely certain that there's every single piece of what we're doing here is not just consistent with HUD requirements, but is actually for sure precisely required by HUD, and nothing more. Not that I don't support the project, I totally do, but after several million dollars already in it, I don't feel like I need to prove that anymore. What we need to do is make sure that we're being as prudent as possible in this regard, helping the developer to the extent we need to, but no more than that.
Correct, yeah. We, staff did review the program requirements. We did get a chance to speak to the loan officer who is processing the loan, who provided a lot of the background information, the underwriting requirements by HUD. So like you said, we are, in essence, providing a lot of leeway, but, you know, we really do feel strongly that the project itself is a great benefit to the city. It is the largest project, the largest affordable housing project in the city. And again, we're not going above and beyond what we really need to do to make the refinance possible.
So I don't want to beat it up, but just the fact that it's an important project, we could put an infinite amount of money and it would still be that. So I just want to be absolutely sure. Every single piece of here is absolutely mandatorily required by HUD, and if we were to pull any of them, that pulling any of those out like a jenga puzzle would cause the entire HUD arrangement to collapse?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, Raul, the total amount of the loan is what, like 18.5 million?
Yes. The, what they're proposing to, the new first mortgage, correct.
Is what? The first mortgage, okay.
18.5.
Okay. And so what will be the balloon payment at the end of this process? Because we're unloading the project.
There shouldn't be a balloon payment at the, at least on the RDA loan. There should not be a balloon payment. Again, we're extending the term to, of the loan, so that would allow for those payments to be made at the end of that loan term.
The problem that we get into, and it's like every one of the, I mean, Paul comes to us all the time with refinancing some of these loans, or the bonds that we have taken out. And we have been very, very cautious not to extend the terms so that we can get a little cheaper interest rate, because sometimes these loans in the past have been extended, but in the long run, you just pay a heck of a lot more. You don't pay off the damn loan. So, you don't pay off the bond, I mean. So I just want to make sure that, it seems like that's what we're doing here, and it has not been the policy of the council, at least lately, that has not been. And this just doesn't, it really doesn't pass the smell test. There's something that is embedded in all this, because I can remember when this developer came to us, I mean, it was, oh, you know, I've got this, and I've got that, and I've got this. And, you know, we were really pretty sure that this developer would really follow through on the commitments and follow through on the things that he had talked about. And now he wants to tweak it, he wants to change it. And my concern is, is if he wants to change it now, even later on, he'll want to change it again, because really, $75,000 is a pebble on the beach of these guys. It's nothing. And so it's like, nothing's ever going to, we're not going to be able to cut into it and pay it all off as quickly as we possibly, as we should. So I mean, this is one that I will continue to take a pretty close look at as we move down the road, but I can tell you right now, I'm sort of holding my nose to pass it.
Can I just ask a? Yeah, Mayor Protem Ladesma. Thank you. Just a couple of questions to the mayor's point. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the program and what actually is requirement. So the fact that we're extending the RDA loan to 35 years from 30 years, that the HUD program requires you to match?
The HUD program requires that we-
Or is it an up to?
We have to match the term of the first mortgage loan.
So if we look at the first mortgage at 30, and we're at 35, am I reading this correctly?
Yes, it should be 30. If we have 35 years-
It's showing 35 years at 3% on the proposed Courtyard Village structure that you have outlined here.
Correct, I see that. In our proposed changes, we are, that's a mistake, so I apologize for that. It's an oversight on our part. But what we are proposing is to extend the term of the loan to match the first mortgage, which is what the HUD program requires.
So just, if I could, so it would be 35 years because it would be another 30 years, right? I mean, the 30 years that we did in the original loan, we've already had, you know, three, four, or five years ticked down, so that's why it's 35, right? Because you would be refinancing essentially that loan for a whole, for a new 30.
Correct.
Okay. I have no other questions, so I want clarity on that. Okay. But, so just to Mr. Kristoff's point, if we act on this tonight, we won't have any other actions in front of us, right?
No, on this particular project, no. This would be the last action on it.
Okay. So the, I mean, the staff report indicates that part of the reason for this was this Umpqua, Wachovia-Umpqua switch, and that the original pro forma had in it an expectation of a Wachovia loan at a 40-year term at 5.43% interest. And under this arrangement, it would be a 2.95, so they got a shorter-term loan at a lower interest rate from Umpqua?
Correct.
Right? I mean, and I'm not a banker, so I don't, and I didn't do that in my head, maybe Mr. Lombard did. But, so what's the, what is the, what is the actual cost impact of that change from 40, from 40 years to 30 years, but with a substantially lower interest rate, do you know?
The impact from the original Wachovia loan?
Yeah, part of this was, at least, the way it's been described, is motivated by the switch from what was expected was a Wachovia loan at 40, 40 years at 5.43% to an Umpqua loan at 30 years, but at 2.95%. So I'm trying to get a sense of the magnitude of the hit essentially that the developer had to take as a result of that change.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Pat Sablehouse. I'm the attorney representing CFY Development. I, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number. You are correct, Mr. Chairman, that if you go from a 30-year amortization to a 40-year amortization, there is an enormous savings on the monthly payments that you have to make on the loan. And if you go from a 5.4% loan to a 2.9% HUD loan, which is what we're trying to do now, then that, again, is a rather significant savings on the monthly payment that you have to make, even though the HUD amortization schedule is only 30 years as opposed to 40 years on the original Wachovia loan. And then when we got stuck with the downturn in the economy, when Wachovia went bankrupt, that was going to be a 40-year loan at about 5.43% and never could materialize. And so my client ended up having to take a minimum loan of about $9 million from Umpqua, which is the first- Umpqua, which is the first mortgage now. And then he had to put up eight point five million dollars in cash in order to, to pay off the, the construction loan on it, to keep the deal financially feasible and, and not go into, into foreclosure. And I think that, that all of us would agree that the project has been well-run and well-maintained since that time, even though the rents that were projected originally are quite a bit less today than what we thought they were going to be. You simply couldn't get the rent levels that were projected originally on the Wachovia loan. And, and that's why my client had to put up eight and a half million dollars to keep the deal afloat. And, and he has done so to date. And I had urged him in, in discussions with, with your staff, Raul Huerta and, and the council for you, Jeff Mitchell, to allow us to refinance it so that, that my client could get back to where he was originally, three or four years ago, when we thought that we were going to have a first mortgage of about eighteen million dollars, which is what we're trying to do now, so that he could get his cash back out for, for other development purposes that he wants to engage in.
Right, understood.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, I understand. The, thanks. The, the issue is we're not, it is not our job, and it's not the taxpayers' job, to make whole, you know, unfortunate circumstances that occur in the market. And so, that is not, that's just not our, that is not the responsibility of the city. And so, I, I'm prepared to vote for it on, with the understanding that every single one of these provisions is absolutely, completely, totally, precisely required, otherwise the whole thing falls apart. If it's not, if that turns out, you know, later not to be the case, I know, I'm going to be extremely upset because I don't, I do not like this. I understand for the, for the, for the project to stay viable, that, you know, the general restructuring does make sense. But if there's anything else that's in here that is not absolutely certain, I mean, I don't want to keep repeating myself, but this must be airtight. Because I don't, we don't have extra money to throw into the deal to make it more attractive or more viable for, for the developer. I get the HUD program, I'm supportive of that, but that's, but our job is not to deal, if we're, if we're trying to help everybody in the community who is disadvantaged by Wachovia's implosion and make them all whole, we can't. And that's not, and that's not our job. So I just want to be, I want to be absolutely sure as we're going forward, that both in your department and city manager, city attorneys, we're clear that that's, that that's what we are doing tonight.
That, that is our understanding, and I, I would invite you to ask Mr. Sablehouse to confirm that as well.
Let me, if I may, Mayor, confirm absolutely that all of the requirements that Mr. Huerta has presented to you and that are in the staff report tonight are, are requirements that are absolutely required by HUD. And they advised me that if we couldn't comply with every one of those provisions, then the, the loan program through HUD, the two twenty-one D three, would not be available for, for this project. We, we debated, we argued with them to some extent, but they said the HUD rules are the HUD rules, and, and you have to live with them or not, or not go with that kind of financing.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I guess one thing I would request with concurrence of the council is, let's just say a year from today, I'd like to have an update on this and find out exactly where we are in the pecking order and making sure we're following all of the requirements and that those are actual requirements. So we could just make a note, Raul, and then bring all that back.
One other component, which is the, so the, the letter of credit component that is referenced in the staff report, it's not part of our action, correct?
It is part of your action in the sense that they have provided us with a standard form letter of credit. Because it would constitute a commitment to make a payment, it can't really be put into the loan documents themselves. That's one of the issues we ran into with HUD is no firm payment obligation. But I have reviewed the letter of credit, it is a standard form bank letter of credit.
And have, are the city manager, the finance department, others, are we, that's one, that's an example of a way to try to mitigate the, the potential cost and exposure to the city? Have we explored, you know, we exhausted all the other HUD compliant workarounds that would allow us to minimize the deferral of payments to the future and maximize, and minimize our level of risk? Or was this one offered to us by the developer, and so we took it, but we haven't actually done much more investigation and possibilities other than that?
Well, I think one question maybe we want to ask at this point is whether this could be held over to January, and I'll have an opportunity to explore that. We have considered that. I've talked with your staff about it, I've talked with Mr. Sablehouse about it. I, I don't want to represent to you that I've, I've spent so much time that I've thought of every possible thing, and maybe there are some other ideas that we could explore, if you could hold over till January ninth.
So what's the, what's the timing on this, Raul? Maybe, perhaps if you two could confirm, I want, I would like to get our, our staff's recommendation on this as opposed to hearing directly from Mr. Sablehouse. So, why don't we put this, put this over for a moment while you all figure this out and then return to the, to the council on it?
Okay.
All right. So let's remove, let's remove that from the consent agenda altogether. And then we have the remainder of the consent calendar before us, which is items four, five, and six. And we had no questions or comments on that, or is there a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda?
I'll move the remainder.
One second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Vegas and seconded by Mr. Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. So that brings us then to item seven, which is consideration and readoption of Resolution twelve dash fifty-three, reauthorizing the execution of a site lease, facilities lease, and other documents associated with the two thousand and twelve refunding lease obligations. Mr. Lombard?
Yeah, this item may look familiar to you. It actually was on the agenda two weeks before December fifth. It was on the consent calendar, and the bond counsel looked at it and said, you know.
You're not live, are you? Are you, is your mic live? Is this one of the mics that doesn't function?
Let's see. There we go.
Okay.
Bond counsel looked at that and advised us that there's a state government code that advises that any new, new debt issued, even refundings should be on your regular agenda. So we're bringing it back to you. We're going to ask you to, to readopt Resolution twelve five-three, which authorizes a site lease, facilities lease, and escrow agreement, and various other actions to allow us to proceed with a two thousand and twelve refunding lease obligation deal. And then also, you know, you're going to be authorizing the new lease obligations that refinance the bonds that were issued back in two thousand and four to, to build Fire Station forty-five and improvements to Fire Station forty-two. So quickly, just some of the highlights of the deal, just going over the benefits. We're working with a lender we did a deal with a year ago when we refinanced City Hall, BBVA Compass. And so they're going to help us close the deal by the end of this month, by the end of the year. We've locked into an interest rate of two point nine percent. Total issuance for the refunding will be about seven point nine million. And we're going to realize a total savings, again, this is just not, not discounted dollars, but total savings of six hundred and fifty-three thousand basically over the, the life out to two thousand and thirty, but net present value savings of about five hundred and fifty-two thousand, or it's going to work out to a little over thirty-seven thousand in savings per year. But that savings is the general fund, so we like these. We like these deals because it's, it's real savings that we can see in the general fund. So overall savings, seven point six-nine percent net present value, which exceeds our, our goal of five percent that we look at in all our refinancings. And the best part, the term is going to stay the same, we're not extending it, so we're going, we're just going out to two thousand, two thousand and thirty on this one. And that completes staff's presentation.
All right, any questions, staff? All right, so this is before us only because it's required by law to not be on the consent agenda, and so we're, we have it now as a separate item, but it is, as Mr. Lombard described, a net present value savings of half a million dollars. So it's a, it's a good financial arrangement. Can I just ask, are we, we've been, we've been, you've been proposing lots of these sorts of refinances, refinancing arrangements to us with respect to things that the, that the city or the agency or our subsidiary units pay? Have we, have we, or are we examining similar refinancings of some of our Melrose bonds that, that don't have a direct impact on the city's expenditures, but on the, the payment, the property tax payments required of, of some of our homeowners in the city and other property owners?
And Mayor, and in fact, we are, we've done a refinancing of CFD fourteen and seventeen earlier this year, which is a Newport State's umbrella. And now we're looking at CFD twelve, which is the really field bonds. And we actually have a proposal from a, from a bank, and so they're looking at financial, year-end financials, and hopefully we'll be coming back with that one for an authorization. We're, we're probably going to be coming back to you again with the, the remainder of the two thousand and three water bonds. We had to wait because there was a certain call date, we had to wait until, so that will probably be coming back to you in two thousand and thirteen as well. And, and of course, we're going to, we're going to continue to look at other, as you noted, land-based or land-se cured community facility district refinancings that could save money for property owners.
Great, thank you. All right, then we have item seven before us. Is there, is there no further discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we readopt Resolution twelve dash fifty-three, authorizing the execution of a site lease, facilities lease, and escrow agreement, and authorize certain additional actions related to two thousand and twelve lease, refunding lease obligations.
Second.
All right. And that includes the first, first clause as well? But is there no further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Abstain from this vote, please.
All right, Mr. Mayor Portemlo Desma is abstaining from the item. Thank you. That motion carries. So, Mr. Tuttle, are we prepared to return to item three, or?
Mr. Mayor and council, we've talked to the developer and the staff. We're fine with putting that item over to the January ninth meeting so we can research the HUD requirements.
Okay, sure. All right.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Mr. Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Notwithstanding any of what's been said, and I completely concur, I just wanted to raise the issue, or at least the awareness that five years ago, six years ago, when we were talking about this project, it was an absolute disaster. It was a huge percentage of our police calls. Officers would not go in there by themselves, this complex was a complete mess. There was so much crime in there, we didn't know what to do. It was about to fall apart, literally, well, in many respects. It didn't happen easily, but, but the, the current owner came forward with a proposal and required us to put a lot of skin in the game, there's no question about that. We're certainly partners in this all the way through. But if you drive in there now, it is a, is a real great opportunity for affordable housing in our community that its proximity to West Capitol Avenue didn't offer a lot of that at that time, and we've come a long ways with this project. So, again, notwithstanding any, any of what's been said, I completely concur. I do want to recognize that product there is a much better product than it was five years ago. Our staff did a wonderful job of putting together a very complicated project to finance it through a series of different sources. So I didn't want, I didn't want to let that get away.
Thank you, Mr. Vegas. Very, very, I think partly because we took it off consent, we went right into the issue, and, and you're absolutely right. I'm glad Raul's still here, the developer's gone, so we learned our questions, not the, not the praise, but it's, it's definitely been a, that was a worthwhile project, worthwhile investment.
Yep.
And it is, it has turned, it really turned around a, a major problem in the city. So thanks for, thanks for bringing that up. All right, so then item eight is consideration of interim design for phase two of West Capitol Commons Project in Rayleigh's Landing. Mr. Bermudez?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Before you tonight is consideration of an interim design for phase two of West Capitol Commons Project. That's located in the Rayleigh's Landing project area. As the council may recall, the West Capitol Commons Project came before you in a design review approval back in July and early August. That project, it will total, when it's ultimately built, phase one and phase two will be three hundred and fifty multifamily units. Phase one consists of courtyard units that are between Third and Fifth Street and just south of G Street, where there is current grading going on right now. Phase two consists of an attached product, multifamily, roughly at this point, a hundred and twelve multifamily units that will front Tower Bridge Gateway. As the council may recall, when design review came before you, there was some concern over if we would see a phase two at the time. And currently, there's still some discussions ongoing with Pacific Gas and Electric, PG&E, over a pipeline that is in West Capitol Avenue. There was also some kind of gray areas related to property rights and, and issues that are still being sorted out. So, learning this, in addition, there was also a program within phase two where they were going to hold and push back the development of the rec center and the leasing office. So there was quite a bit of discussion to want to get a fully integrated development on the land or the courtyard side or phase one of, for this particular project. During that discussion and through discussion with the development team, they did redesign and include the recreation room and the leasing office within its programming for phase one. However, one of the concerns that did come up was certainty that we would see a phase two design in the future based on the conditions that I characterize. So at the last design review approval meeting with council, it, the council recommended that there be a condition placed on the project before the issuance of building permits along the southern boundary, that the development team and designer come back with an interim phase two solution for what I call that southern boundary. As we know, you can see that southern boundary from Tower Bridge Gateway with the great elevation. And it was a major concern just exactly how that edge treatment would be viewed from that corridor along TBG. So, the development team put together through several months, ended up coming back with a significant improved design on that southern boundary. And trying to bring up the exhibit that's, I believe, attachment one in your staff report. They came back with this design. This is the recent design. As you can see, and first off, what I want to note is the reference to West Capitol Avenue there, that's actually Tower Bridge Gateway, so it's not West Capitol Avenue. The other thing to note is that, and it's, doesn't come through in the reproduction, is that the sycamore trees along TBG will be retained as part of this interim design solution. So what they did is they decided to kind of play off the, the sycamore trees in this interim design solution. They will include also removing the asphalt on West Capitol Avenue within weather permitting. We will issue a grading permit, and that will be necessary to, to integrate this program here. So we'll issue a grading permit for the removal of the asphalt. They will go into a design that will include some low-growth type of fiskew that will be seasonal grass. So based on the season, it will be controlled and regulated as opposed to having to go in there and maintain it with a landscape crew. As you transition, you'll get into what would be some manicured grass area in this location here as you get closer to the southern boundary. They integrated as well some trees along the borders, screening the parking area as well as screening the rec room and the sales office here. What is quite interesting and, and unique kind of design is instead of just running a traditional fence across the boundary, they put some thought into this design, and they come, came up with an artistic type of offsetting fencing. And this fencing will be both brick pa, brick panels, sorry, and as well as some fabricated, fabricated type of treatment. Trying to think what it's here listed as. Some type of translucent type of panel. And the reason they did this translucent panel will be that it will offer in the evening hours a nice reflective type of light screening and add to the, kind of the ambiance of that view corridor from Tower Bridge Gateway. The brick panels will also include some type of lighting, and it will soften and create kind of a halo effect. And then as you move closer to kind of the, the spine of this particular development, which as we know, when phase two is developed, this will ultimately connect here to the TBG building. They are placing right now some decorative flatwork as well as some bent seating and some, some decorative bushes, and this will be an interactive type of social gathering area for the community. And lastly, what they will do is include some artistic monument signage in the program that will be at Third and Tower Bridge- That will be at Third and Tower Bridge Gateway and at the Fifth Street entrance. The signage will come in as a separate submittal, they're working on that design element as we speak. And staff will review that with council's direction and ultimately approve that. Staff, as you know, is still proceeding with discussions with PG&E to hopefully get the removal or get some type of direction of what we're going to do with the pipeline. And ultimately, with this approval, we do move forward with being able to issue building permits once we, for that southern boundary area of those units, once we complete our review of building plans, which we're hopeful that we'll complete it by the end of the year. So this completes staff's presentation, I'm open to answer any questions. The development team is available to answer any questions, they don't have a formal presentation, but I'm here to address any questions. My apologies, I was supposed to move to the slide two, which gives you the, the artist or the rendering perspective, which I think, you know, in great detail, what I really pull out of it is you really get some kind of character feeling of what that rec room in that building will look like now, as well as I think you get a good kind of sense of the thoughtfulness that they put into to treat that kind of edge condition with the softening of the lighting, as well as the, the translucent lighting here, as you see here. So this concludes staff's presentation at this time.
Can I just add, technically, so the, the, the conditions that we had before were, I, the, 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 the final apartment, the final building in Phase 1 couldn't, couldn't proceed until either the Phase 2 TBG building permit was issued, which you're not proposing tonight?
Correct.
Or a re-treatment of the onsite parking and additional treatment of Phase 1, is that, you've been, the agenda item says you're asking us to approve the interim or proposed Phase 2 interim design, is that intended to be the same, is that the same thing as the re-treatment of?
That is the same thing.
Phase 1, so you're, so, okay, so this, this would trigger the second provision that we had as a condition?
Correct.
Previously. And this is one of the pieces that, when that item was up, you know, kind of, one of the central components of the, of our discussion that led to that condition was the, the southeast corner being so critical is the first thing that you, that you, or one of the first things you come entering the city from the Tower Bridge. Right, that the, the, the particular significance of that corner, which is not in, in Attachment 2, it's the one thing you cannot, you don't actually see that corner. You're only seeing the, the, the southern, the southern line, all the way up to the point of what that corner, that corner would look like. Do we, have we, have you seen any, anything else that would give, because that, I mean, that was the, sort of the central issue, and we don't have a rendering of that key component? But maybe you'd, have you?
I have not seen a, a treatment of that area, other than to know that the programming of the signage and the artisan type of signage for that gateway at Third and TBG. That's all I really know at this time, and have reviewed, and so I haven't seen that.
Okay, but we would, but, so we, but, but we, what we're asked to do tonight is to approve, essentially to lift that prior condition that was put in place, at least as I recall, at least in part, because of the interest in making sure that that corner of special significant was appropriately, significance was appropriately treated. So maybe I'm, maybe I'm mixing up the histories, but.
Yeah, I, I was, according to my notes from that night, it was more about the view from Tower Bridge Gateway from that area and the parking that you would see, and how it just seemed like there was like an unfinished edge and not a lot of thought would go into the interim condition. The, the treatment at this corner, particularly at Tower Bridge Gateway and Third, there's a slope there in the interim condition. It's a fairly significant slope. So to really treat it, you'd have to build it up or do something, and that, that would be right over the gas line. And so we're probably not going to be able to do much over the gas line as long as it exists in that location. So what they're proposing is kind of where they can, up on the slope, trying to do some sort of artistic monument. And they're leaning towards something that would complement and sort of reflect the, the Tower Bridge. And also ties into the name of their project. But it's a monument that could be moved or possibly brought into the corner of the Phase 2 Tower Bridge Gateway building when it is built.
Other, other questions at this point? All right, then we do have a couple requests to speak on this item. We'll start with the, the, the project developer, Daniel Leathercutt with Wolf Company. Welcome.
Mayor, Councilman, thank you for, for viewing this project again. Another item on there where we're trying to get, be thoughtful in our approach. Could we have the, the image, the rendering come up again? I think I can answer some questions about what you just brought up on, on how this, this, these improvements have evolved. As we worked with staff, it was very clear that the, the edge of Third Street and Tower Bridge is, as you drive in, there's, there's no place to put anything. It's, it's, the trees are there, and then there's a very steep slope. And we begin to drive by it and stand there and walk and figure out what is it that the council was really getting at? And it's the view as you, as you move over the intersection and look out onto our project. And a lot of thought has gone into this. I mean, essentially what you see are temporary improvements that cost what permanent improvements would cost. And there's been several meetings with staff, we've spent countless hours with the architect, and we've ended up with a, a treatment that we think our interests are perfectly aligned, we're building a very expensive project, we want to build Phase 2. We've engaged all of the consultants for Phase 2, we've signed the contracts, we're ready to go, we only wait on a solution with PG&E. If we could start today, we would. So I don't know what more we can do in, in regards to Phase 2. With Phase 1, we're concerned as well, what does our window look like? And so we've essentially went back to the city and said, you know, this old concrete is, you know, it just doesn't work. And we could recycle the asphalt, it won't hurt anything, we'll improve the project at our cost. And we've worked out what we think is a win-win, where we're going to plant and irrigate with erosion, with water-efficient plants, also build a small bulb out so there's a seeding area. And the fence is, has both lighting features and translucent features. So we're, we're pleased with what we've created, we hope you are too. One of the concerns we've had is that we have a restriction on the last two building permits, for the last two buildings on the edge of Fifth and Tower Bridge Gateway. And we'd like those removed, we need the uncertainty, we need to be able to move forward with our whole project. We've met every request of the city, and in our opinion, we've done more. We've redesigned the clubhouse, we've pushed it back, we have all the amenities in, for both phases in Phase, in Phase 1. The clubhouse is a very high-designed building that, that we think will reflect the kind of urban atmosphere there. So that is really what's before you tonight, is we've tried to go beyond the mark, design something that's beautiful and that we can agree allows the restriction on the last two permits to be removed. Also, I see my time is up, we want to make sure that we're getting feedback from the council on those improvements, that we have both landscaped and fenced. And we think we've done more than, than the minimum in order to have a great project. So I'll be happy to take questions. David Mogavero, the architect, is here. We have, we could swarm you with pictures and images, and it could be a love fest. So I'll answer questions if need be, otherwise I'll sit down.
All right, thank you. David Mogavero is next.
Mayor, council members, thank you for having us here tonight. I, unless you want me to make a presentation that is somewhat redundant with gems, I, I will not. I could walk you through the design a little bit deeper perhaps, but I just want to say that, you know, we're improving this property from property line to property line to the backside of Tower Bridge Gateway Boulevard. A lot of thought and care has gone into what those improvements are going to be. Virtually a quarter million to $300,000 of those are all things we'll have to rip out when we, when we build Phase 2. And just the thoughts on the corner piece, we've decided that we're going to do an art competition for that. And the recommendations from staff, we've held off on it because we, everyone feels it needs to be integrated in with the signage program for the project. The core theme is going to be about West Sacramento, more than, more than the project. We're thinking a lot about pedestrian movements, how we can enhance that, and of course, provide a sense of arrival to the community. So it had been recommended to us to, to include that in the signage package as opposed to doing it right now. So we've, we've got a very extensive program that we're here with you tonight. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, David. All right, Lana Palhemas?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Lana Palhemas, and I represent the West Sacramento Conservancy, which is a grassroots conservation group here in West Sacramento. We come here tonight to support the West Sacramento City staff recommendation to integrate the existing sycamore trees that line the current Tower Bridge Gateway. The sycamore trees are a natural enhancement to the Tower Bridge Gateway and adds to the natural beautification of the area. Not only is West Sacramento affected by these trees, but so is Sacramento as well as the region. I have a letter here for City Council that comes from Tree Davis, and I wanted to read just a little bit of it. Oh, my notes. And this is written by the executive director. He says, "These mature trees create an iconic skyline for the Tower Bridge Gateway. The trees also work for our community by infiltrating stormwater and increasing air quality. By incorporating the sycamore trees into the plan, the development will be more valuable, walkable, livable, and healthy community which is desirable for all parties involved." Also, we did contact the Sacramento Tree Foundation, and I'm sure you folks are aware of the Green Print Initiative. And apparently, there is someone on the council that actually is a green print champion that represents the city of West Sacramento at Secog. And I talked to the Sacramento Tree Foundation, and they also are very supportive of keeping the sycamores, sycamores. And I hope that you will consider and approve the city staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sharp?
Hi, council members and mayor, thank you for this opportunity to make a statement, although Lana said it so well. I am here to support and encourage you to consider qualifying the features, including the sycamores. I think that the plan is just outstanding. I've been a, a member of the Sacramento community for the better part of 30 years, and I have raised my children, my family here. The sycamore trees lining the Tower Bridge Gateway are a milestone to the, my son and his peers, who are now of the age that they're your potential buyers. And I'm also a former educator, and I'll tell you, we told them and trained them in sustainability and conservation, and they're going to want to live in an aesthetically pleasing community, which includes the aesthetics of the sycamores. But also, they're going to appreciate, they're going to be drawn to these established trees because they've been taught to respect that. And I know, I understand that your developers are from the Scottsdale Phoenix area. I've traveled there throughout the last few decades, springtime only, and I have seen that community just put so much effort and water and resources into landscaping. Here we have it naturally. I have also been to another, a number of communities, Cleveland, Atlanta, all within this year. Trees are what sells, and I think that you want this development to draw the population. And I want to encourage you, and really, just, it's just an excellent plan, it's so foresightful. And thank you so much to the city planners for including the sycamores. I think your future residents will have the, the same experience as that my son did, as a little boy driving down there, what, for a ballpark game or, or whatever. And they'll think, oh, those trees, they're still there. I know we could make new trees, and we want to grow new trees as well. But the established landmark trees are so crucial, and they're part, a key part of your beautiful city logo. So, thank you, and hooray for our side.
All right, that concludes the public comment on item eight. Jim, do you have anything else on this? I actually have a question on, on just, so the, on the tree piece in particular. What you're asking us to do tonight is approve what, what is likely to be an interim plan. Is there, the, just so, I don't, I mean, I don't want to come back a couple months later and have Phase 2 result in the removal of these trees and have folks be surprised. So what's the, what's the relationship between the tree, the existing sycamore tree plan for this interim set of improvements and for Phase 2?
Okay, in this current Phase 1, and with the approval of this plan, those trees will remain. If we get to a Phase 2 design, the council already approved the design review for Phase 2. So in essence, what would be required by the developer would be to come to staff and request a tree permit, tree removal permit to allow the Tower Bridge Gateway frontage to be developed with that particular approval and plan that you reviewed back in July and August. Staff will obviously require through the tree permit review process, an arborist report, the condition of the trees. We'll look into design details more specifically as the developer and the architect program out that frontage, and then we'll see what we need to do as far as making that development happen, as far as the design review approval for those units.
All right, thank you. I, 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 I mean, I know that's going to, that will cause additional concern, but I wanted to be absolutely clear about what the trajectory of this is at the, at the moment. That the, from a, from the heritage tree perspective, this is an effective solution, but it is an interim solution, and the, those trees will, will continue to be evaluated as part of the Phase 2 process. So that, so this is not the final, final everything on, on, on even that aspect of it. Which, you know, the, the trees are, they're both, they're, for all the reasons said, they're both an exciting and a big challenging issue for the city to manage. And we have an excellent city tree coordinator who shares the same love and heart and respect for heritage trees that we've heard about tonight, and that the council, I know, also believes in. It's Mr. Vegas who's our representative to the, to the green print. And we do too, and the, we face a fair amount of trade-offs. One is we're doing our best to try to concentrate development in the urban core, as opposed to having it spread all over into farmland and habitat, including within the city limits. So part of our efforts are to try to maximize in the urban part of the city, the, the density of development. So that is, that's definitely an objective that we have. But the other is tree management itself, and as I think has been said, we, it is critical that we continue to renew the, the, the set of trees that we have in the community. And we have had problems with, as Ms. Curtley has reported to us on now several occasions, in areas where we have sort of forced the issue and said, do not remove a tree, where it was a tweener on the health of the tree. Many of those have been subsequently lost because they, they could not survive in the new development context. You know, we built, they got built all around them, and we tried to save them, and then, and here's the rub then. If they die as a result of that process, then no one is obligated to replace them. If they, if, if we can't, if we can anticipate and manage, frankly, manage, do a little bit of managed care on our tree population, then, and the developer issues a permit and says, we want to remove this tree in advance, then we, then the city's ordinances require a lot of additional large trees to be planted. And so that's the, that's the trade-off that we're always trying to manage, and none of us on the council are arborists specifically. So we contract with an independent arborist, as well as the advice and counsel. as well as the advice and counsel and analysis of our own city tree coordinator to try to, try to balance that, to maximize the likelihood that we're going to save trees, heritage trees that will continue to survive even once the development is done, while also making sure that if they're not likely to survive, that we want to make sure that we get the resources from that development project to replace on a massive scale. I mean, even this project alone, I think already has paid for, or they've been required to pay for 622 new 15-gallon or larger trees. And that's an important part of our work to renew the tree population in the city. So I don't, we don't know what the answer is. I mean, whatever happens for Phase Two, we'll have to go through all of that review, but that's the kind of balance that the tree, you know, the urban forestry experts from around the country are trying to engage in, that we're trying to apply here, apply here as well, to both sustain a healthy, a healthy population of heritage trees and to continue to plan and invest in the planting of a lot of, a lot, a lot, a lot, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, in some cases, thousands of additional trees as well. So none of that's on the table for tonight. Tonight's action, at least from my perspective, does, you know, preserves all of those to the future, but there will be future debate and analysis and science and arborist health reports and what have you that are going to be coming forward on those other sycamores as well. So from the conservancy, please stay vigilant through that process, because we do depend on you raising the alarm and giving a second set of opinions, and sometimes a fourth and fifth and 18th set of opinions on the arborist's report. They're totally public documents. We want people to look at them and question the, you know, the health analysis, but that's the, at least from my perspective, those are the kinds of trade-offs that we're going to be looking at as we go forward to the next phase of the, the next phase of the project. Are there other questions or discussions? No.
Mayor Proton Ledesma? Yeah, just a couple of questions, just a couple of questions. So what we're approving tonight is, are these specific plans, I just want to know what, these specific plans will be basically behind the counter for us to use if they go forward with the interim plans, correct? This is, I just want to be clear that this is exactly what we're going to see and not some change if things.
No, this is, this is locked with this approval, yes.
Okay.
Aside from this monument type of artisan signage that will be a staff level.
That's kind of what goes back to the original question about that, what that might be and how we, how we could capture that if this gets approved today. Sort of how do we ensure that it's going in the direction we want it to go?
Well, traditionally, signage, you know, packages come into, that is a staff-level review, so it's staff's thought that the council would be comfortable with staff making sure that it complies with your guidance and your intent and make that approval over the counter.
Okay. Is that why you're trying to define an art project as a sign? I mean, I don't want to see it either way. The council, I mean, we're a policymaking body, and whether it's a sign or a piece of public art, we wouldn't, we would not normally be involved in that, but the, you know, the extent that it is sculptural art as much as it is signage, you know, we have a, we do have a process for that. That doesn't involve the council's review, but that does exist, and we should respect that.
Okay.
I know we have at least one of our arts commissioners here.
Arts commissioner, okay, sure.
All right, any further discussion? Is there a motion then on item eight? Mr. Johansson? Mr. Johansson moves. Is there a second adoption of the item? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, turned down, that motion carries. Council calendar, Ms. Richardson?
Given we've got one microphone, I'll take the council calendar. As you know, Mr. Mayor, Council, the city hall will be closed December 24th through January 1st. We will reopen on Wednesday, the 2nd. We have alerted our residents on the website and other means of that closure. We are also working on a federal lobbying day to coincide with the mayor's trip as part of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. We're looking right now, going back on January 14th through the 17th, we'll coordinate with the mayor on that activity. The staff is also proposing a port, community forum, discuss the business plan, a longer period to go through the details of the business plan before it goes back to the port commission. We've talked to Chair McGowan about January 22nd, from 5:00 to 7:00. We do a forum at the community center, invite Planning Commission, the Economic Development Advisory Commission, the chamber and other interested stakeholders to that two-hour forum so that we can go through and get additional community input on the proposed business plan. That, again, is January 22nd. We're also working with Assemblyman, or State Senator Steinberger, on a tour of the city. His staff has indicated that he's very interested in doing that. We're looking at a Friday later in January or early February, and we will obviously alert you to the details of that. On behalf of the staff, I want to thank you again for taking the time to acknowledge our staff earlier today and wish you a happy holiday.
Any questions on the calendar? City manager reports?
That was it.
All right, city attorney reports? All right, staff direction from members of the council? We have no, we have no future agenda requests? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I would just like to tell the community Merry Christmas. We will not be meeting again until after the first of the year, so I hope everybody has it safe and happy and Merry Christmas.
And Hanukkah too? We're in Hanukkah. Whatever, observation. All right, so then, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Viegas and seconded by Mayor Proton Ledesma. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, turned down, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.